All right, we're going to call the Hermiston City Council Urban Renewal Agency to Order with a declaration of quorum. All members present. Let's have a flag salute. Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome this evening to all of you in attendance. Mr. Smith, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay. We're going to start out with our, in our proclamations, presentations, and recognitions with number A or letter A, Introduction Municipal Court Manager Jillian Viles. Viles?
Viles.
Viles.
Viles. It's only supposed to be one L.
Oh, Lily.
Viles, sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce our new court administrator, Jillian Viles. I asked her to come and introduce herself and you'll get to know her a little bit tonight and then she'll be participating in our goal setting as well, so.
Welcome.
Well, thank you and good evening. I'm excited to be here. Just a little bit about myself, I've lived here in Hermiston for five and a half, coming up on six years. The last four and a half years, I've worked at the Umatilla County Circuit Court, most recently as a treatment court coordinator. So, I relaunched and developed the drug court program and then had the opportunity to come over to City of Hermiston and I'm really excited for that. And my staff has just thrown me right in. We've had some good conversations this past week. Today is my second, start of my second week, so we've been kind of going over what needs to happen and what issues are going on and what we can do to solve those. And looking forward to the new city hall being built and moving into there with many of you guys and just kind of getting to know everyone.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
So, besides Ms. Viles, do you go by Jill or Jillian?
Jillian.
Jillian?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council of Ms. Viles? No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I also see Dr. Mooney here from the Hermiston School District. Welcome, give us an update on what's going on at schools.
Hello. Tonight's regular board meeting has been postponed, so you get me instead of Mr. Bacon this evening, so. I don't know whether that's a good thing or not.
We always enjoy seeing.
It's too late now. It is school board appreciation month, so I do want to take a moment to recognize our seven hardworking school board members that volunteer countless hours of time for our district and the students in our community. So, when you see one of them out and about this month, please make sure and thank them for their service to our community. We are keeping a close eye on the weather. Obviously, last week was, we had a couple of no-school days in there, but also bigger picture, keeping a track on weather or keeping track of the weather and how that's going to affect construction at this point. We are still on target to have our buildings open in the fall and our construction timelines have not been adjusted from what we have been planning. The supply chain continues to throw curveballs at us, so we have regular meetings talking about, you know, what's our plan B when, if we can't get certain materials and how we're going to adjust. But we are tracking right along with our construction timeline and really looking forward to opening those schools in the fall. We are also in the process right now of adjusting our school boundaries with the addition of Loma Vista. Obviously, that directly impacts our elementary boundaries. We have done a few presentations at elementary buildings. I have one again tomorrow evening. That information is also available on the district website with a Google map, so you can actually zoom in and find your house and find out what elementary boundary you would be in. When we complete that boundary process for the elementary, we'll ferret out any adjustments that need to be made to the middle school boundaries as well, so that we have a feeder system for our elementary to middle schools. So, it is the, I guess, almost, we're almost halfway through the first semester, but at the district office level, we also start at this point planning for next year. So, while we're still in the midst of this year, looking at planning for next year with regard to staffing for Loma Vista and across the district and all the planning that's going to come with opening an elementary building, so.
Always good to have you come and speak to us. Can you talk a little bit about COVID and the impact that you're seeing? I see, you know, some of the school districts across the state are having to go back online and what's Hermiston School District's position? And I also saw something about some of the school districts canceling extracurricular activities, so.
So, the Department of Education, last week, I believe it was last week, the days kind of all run together at this point, released a suggestion that districts pause extracurricular. In Hermiston, we are not going to do that. We're going to continue to move forward. We have, in the WIAA, part of what we have to do is test three times a week our student athletes and really it's our winter sports, the season that we're in right now for precautionary reasons. So, we're going to continue with our, you know, all of our safety measures we have in place and keep going. We found last year that there was a huge impact to our kids when they're not involved in athletics, activities, clubs, organizations, all those things that connect kids to school that, you know, bring a lot of our kids there. So, we're going to continue to move forward and make adjustments. Obviously, like everyone, we have staffing issues on a day-to-day basis that we continue to work through. We have, you know, looked at, okay, how short do we have to be before we have to get to where we have to move online? And when I say, "How short do we have to be?", that is, that scenario has every single licensed staff member in the district in a classroom, including myself, like. So, what's our worst-case scenario when we can't cover kids? And part of that, I know that there's no way to replicate what happens when our educators are in classrooms with kids. However, I also know that our community relies on us for a safe place for kids during the day. Canceling school is not something that is done lightly. That's not an easy decision and we are going to take every single, you know, every single opportunity to keep our kids in buildings. So, I don't foresee us going to distance learning unless it is mandated at this point. And the Department of Ed has come out and said they're going to leave those to local decisions, so I don't see that in our future.
Excellent. I agree with you, having kids in the classroom is a huge priority and, you know, it impacts the mental health, not only of those children and their families, but the parents and siblings and everybody else. I want to applaud the school district's position in that and the hardworking teachers that have to show up every day too and fight through this. I know there are some districts that are battling the internal issues of teachers being pretty resistant to that. And our teachers have proven that they're willing to show up every day and do their job and support those kids and their families. And so, I applaud them and thank them. Also, pass along thanks to our hardworking school board. Been a pretty tough last couple of years for them too in trying to fight through all these decisions and the challenges of meeting the community's needs and expectations. And so, I thank them for their service.
I think definitely when I hear stories from across the state, other superintendents and struggles that are happening in communities, not only with school boards, but with staff. And I just can't say enough how fortunate we are to be in this community and have, you know, our teaching staff that we have that is so very talented and gives so much to our kids. But, you know, really dig deep to show up every day and have what's in the best interest of our kids at all their decisions. So, we are definitely fortunate to be in this community without a doubt.
Yeah, thank you and thank you for the, to your administration and yourself for setting the leadership example for that as well. Any comments or other questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Ong?
Yes, Dr. Mooney, I just want to also thank the schools and their support towards the Christmas Express. I think we had an unprecedented amount of items that were donated and thanks to all of the schools and the efforts and the teachers that were also motivating our students. Certainly, the program could not be as successful we saw from last year and, you know, because the schools weren't open, the participation level was not the same. So, you know, this year, we had a large amount of food items that were able to be used to put together those food baskets. So, thank you so much for that.
Our students really rise to the challenge. They love a good competition, that goes without saying. So, I think, you know, it is a great partnership between the police department and school district that we put that challenge together. And our kids showed this week just how generous our families, how generous they are. And I think the, really, the most touching piece of all that is all of the kids that you see coming in with canned foods and contributing to the community. And some of those, we know, are families that are in need themselves, but they are also reaching out to support one another. And again, just another example of what an amazing place Hermiston is and how the community comes together for each other.
Great, good point, right? Any other comments from the council? Well, thank you and we're all rooting for you and wishing you good luck in the next couple of weeks as we go through this COVID stuff and hopefully we hold it all together and keep our kids in the classroom.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, we're now at the first opportunity for citizen input on non-agenda items. So, if there are individuals that are here this evening that would like to speak to an item that's not on the agenda, please come up to the microphone up front. Introduce yourself by name and address, direct your comments to me and try and limit them to less than five minutes. Good evening.
Hello, okay. Jackie Linton, Hermiston. At our last council meeting in December 2021, I brought up the points of why we need three more police officers in Hermiston. We actually need four more. I would like to reiterate that subject. First, I would say that the most important civil service positions are police, fire, and medics. If you needed a policeman's service, wouldn't you want the police department to be fully staffed? If your house was on fire, wouldn't you want the fire department to be fully staffed? If you needed an ambulance service, would you want it fully staffed? The answer, of course, is yes. And at this time, the police department is in dire need of four police officers. They have four teams and they need one extra per team. Is crime down? Yes. And Chief Edmiston can correct me on this, because I'm going by memory at one of our 2040 meetings when, I think it was 2040 meeting, where you said that you believed it was down because of COVID. More people are out of the streets because of that and you can correct me right now if I'm wrong. Okay. But COVID is not going to keep the crime rate down forever. I, for one, do not want to wait until a terrible situation happens and we are behind the eight ball. I believe, and I also believe that citizens of Hermiston would prioritize the police department as an urgent need. Yes, there are a lot of projects on the burner that the council wants, however, they are wants and not needs, the majority of them, in my opinion. And can wait just a little bit, a little while longer to do those extra things. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Linton? Is Ms. Linton on our budget committee? Do we still have appointments available? There's one spot available on our budget committee, Ms. Linton. We need a volunteer. You have the same voice as everybody else on that committee. Thank you, Ms. Linton. Are there others here this evening that would like to speak? Yes, please come up. Welcome.
Hi, it's been a while since I've been here. Virginia Rome Garcia, 435 East Sunset Drive, Hermiston, Oregon. And I'm here yearly, inviting everybody in the community, the members, for the Martin Luther King Peace Walk, which will be the 17th. And I have the agenda on my phone, I don't have, but it'll be January 17th, 2022, 11-21. And it's a Hermiston Cultural Awareness Coalition that will be sponsoring the MLK Walk. And I believe, Brian, are you going to be able to be there? I don't know.
Yes, I'm planning to be there and we're still working out whether the mayor will be able to be there.
All right, well, thank you and I appreciate everybody's presence. But, yes, thank you. Today, I sent my grandson off to Italy for his studying his international business. He'll be there for five, six months, but go Cougs! Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Congratulations to you and your family and your son going off to school. So, that's next Monday, the 17th, 11 o'clock, at the church across the street from City Hall, kitty corner from City Hall.
Correct.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, we're meeting out in front of that church.
We will be meeting at the city hall. No, we'll be meeting at the church.
Yeah.
That is right. And then we'll take the walk around.
Walk around the block, come back toward City Hall.
And then we'll be meeting in the city hall, at the library.
You guys also have a special guest speaker.
Yes, we do. His name is, let me see if I can get him, oh, thank you, reminded me too, yeah. He's Mr., sorry, I thought I had him right here. It's a pastor, yeah, Pastor Marlando? Pastor Marlando, he's the speaker. And another thing, thank you, Jessica Chavez has been the scholarship winner or was awarded the scholarship this year and it's a $1,000 scholarship for her. And she will be hopefully there at the meeting or the event.
Great, perfect.
I'm sorry, it's January 17th.
Yep, next week.
Did I say February?
Week from today. Yeah, so anybody that's available, next Monday, 11:00 a.m., meet in front of the church across from City Hall. And we'll walk around the block, come back in front of City Hall and have maybe a conversation there. And then there will be a guest speaker at the church afterwards, usually as pastries and coffee.
And we're not going to have any of that. It's just going to be coffee.
Coffee.
At the very beginning, it's going to be coffee and it's going to be cocoa, water, of course. But we're not going to be having anything too because of the situation with the COVID restrictions.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's a possibility too, right now, we're planning on being inside the building, but it all depends if those, that changes by now, by then. The mask required.
Thank you.
Everybody has to wear a mask inside the building.
All right.
Inside and out, yeah.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda items A through C. Do we need to poll any of those? Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C? Then moved by Counselor Davis, second by Counselor Primmer, that we approve consent agenda items A through C. Any public comment on those? Can I get a roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Going to move on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2205, Water and Sewer Rates, Mr. Smith.
Yes, says this is part of our annual look at the water and sewer rates and so I'll ask Mr. Morgan to give you a little more detail.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As City Manager Smith mentioned, this is now what our regular process is. I'm going to take this off, I'm not muffled. This is part of our regular process that was adopted back in 2018 by the council to annually update our water and sewer utility adjustments. This year, it's a little bit different though, because we are asking you to kind of add a little bit more detail to the policy on the annual adjustment. So, Resolution 2205, what it does is this evening, it would adjust the water and sewer utility rates by 3.75% beginning March 1st of this year for one year. But the slight policy adjustment that it would also make is that it would now change the automatic annual inflationary adjustment from being just a one-year inflation adjustment to being an average of the previous three years of inflation. So, again, a little bit of background, back in 2018, council made wholesale changes to the structure of how water and sewer utility rates are calculated. And at the, it was felt that the, in order to maintain the purchasing power of the water, the utility fund, to really chain those rates kind of in time and chain them to inflation, that one, it maintains purchasing power, but it also does protect the customers from experiencing large fluctuations in the utility rates over time as we might not experience some rate increases for several years and then have to do some large catch-up adjustments to, again, maintain that purchasing power. Again, some background, I think inflation's been out of the news for a long time for a lot of folks and this year it's coming back. So, I think a lot of folks are becoming more familiar with how inflation is calculated. But in general, you know, inflation, there's any number of inflation indexes that you can use. I think the one that most people are most familiar with that gets shown in the popular media is the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index. And that takes into account really a broad range of consumer products that it measures over time and the price fluctuations of those. What the council chose to use as our index is specifically the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. And that's included in your council agenda packet as far as exactly what that basket of goods is that they look at. But they specifically look at only those things that you would see in construction. So, it's things like a specific amount of lumber, a specific amount of steel shapes, a specific amount of labor, those types of things. So, you know, this doesn't take into account fluctuations in things like, you know, used cars or consumer electronics or some of those types of things, which may fluctuate differently than some of these things. So, that's why you'll see the E and R CCI number may look different than something like the more broadly reported Consumer Price Index. So, again, the E and R's inflation index goes back many decades, but just looking back over the past 10 years prior to 2020, again, inflation was really out of the news. It was extremely stable and so from 2011 to 2020, it really averaged around two and a half percent and it really only got over three. it really only got over 3% on an annualized basis twice. And in 2019, the CCI inflation for that year was less than 2%. So, you know, when we were adjusting the utility rates back in 2018, you know, it made good sense to adjust or chain the utility rates to that inflationary index, and again, we hadn't experienced, you know, large surges in prices in quite some times, so that's where we just made the policy that it would follow that index on an annual basis. So, things have changed considerably in 2021. So, back in October, I discussed this concept with the council's Public Infrastructure Committee of looking at, when we're staring down the barrel of significantly higher inflationary figures, looking at, instead of just doing a one-year look back and adjusting the utility rates on a one-year basis, really kind of smoothing it out and stretching out that inflationary adjustment over the course of three years, and so that's what the recommendation is this evening. The 2021 E and R Construction Cost Index inflation was 7.35%, but the recommendation this evening would be to take the previous three years and average it out, and that's how we get to the 3.75% recommendation for this year. This is a pretty dense table that isn't really worth reading from the audience here, but it is in the council agenda packet, and you might have had a chance to take a look at it. But this is just basically addressing the fact that if we do this three-year rolling inflation averaging process, you might think that we would be, you know, losing out or giving away the utility, might be, you know, falling behind in terms of being able to keep up with its obligations if we basically cut in half inflation for this year, but you can kind of see, this looks at, you know, if we, you know, one year of inflation, you know, historical, and then just projecting forward if it starts to come down, this is what it would look like if we averaged each of those over the course of three years. So you can see that, for example, in 2021, it's lower than what the actual is for that year. 2022, it would also be slightly lower, but then by 2023, it actually outpaces the actual a little bit, you know, if it starts to come down. So you can just kind of see how that would work moving forward, and that over the course of, you know, about 20 years, you can see that you still end up at virtually the exact same place as things end up averaging out over the course of time. So, from a fiscal standpoint, the status quo position for the council is to leave it as is with the assumption that the rates automatically adjust by the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, so that would be automatically increasing the rates by 7.35%, assuming that there's no constriction in the amount of water that customers consume, assuming that that remains flat over the course of the year. That would increase raw cash coming into the utility fund at $675,000, but again, that's really just to keep pace with inflation. So that's why I say that would increase our raw cash at $675,000 over the course of the year, but it would end up having really the same purchasing power as it did in 2021. On the three-year average option, at 3.75%, again, the increase in raw cash coming into the utility fund goes up by $344,000 compared to 0% if there was no adjustment. So what do those new rates look like? These are also included in, they're included in the resolution in the form of the master fee schedule update, and I believe, yeah, so I also included in your agenda packet, really, again, kind of a dense table that shows what those impacts and what those changes are to the median customer out of our 5,400 utility accounts across the city. But in general, I included one for the 3.75% adjustment, as well as one for the 7% adjustment, so you can kind of see the difference. But what you can see here on this slide is just looking at what does the 3.75% adjustment mean for that median customer taken out over the course of 12 months? So the total increase to that customer over the course of a year is about $46 for an increase of about just under $4 a month. But it's also, I think it's useful or important to note that, you know, people's utility usages fluctuate over the course of the year, and so when you average that out over 12 months, it comes out to just under $4, but the highest month that it ends up hitting folks is in the summer irrigation season, that median customer would see an increase of about $5.5, and in the winter months, they'd see an increase of about $3 for. Again, that's a combination of both water and sewer. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Mark, I guess the only question, I don't even really have a question, I guess comment. You know, I like the concept of the three-year average, helps to spread it out at least this year, but should inflation continue down this pathway, we may still see a 6%, 7%, 8% increase on average. And so we are kind of prolonging the pain, so to speak, potentially into the future. Now, who knows, maybe things swing around quicker and it drops faster, but I like the concept, I like the idea, I just, hopefully, we aren't just putting the pain off a year or two.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Yes?
Just to add on, I do like the idea, I think this is yet another creative solution that city staff has come up with. Having a three-year average, I think, would be good, just because we got obviously hit really hard with inflation this past year, inflation that hasn't been seen in decades. But I think it's worth noting that inflation, and I mean, it depends on which economist you can talk to, but sometimes it can perpetuate itself, and so I think by spreading it out and not hitting the increase right at 7% and trying to at least level it out, I think that hopefully we do our part also to slow down the inflation, but at this point, I think this is a really creative solution, and I, to Mayor's point, I really hope that we start to see a drop-off here soon, but I know that we can certainly perpetuate it by continuing to push up numbers, and so I do appreciate the solution.
Other comments? I think, yes, Mr. Owen?
And I know how you always do such an amazing job at communicating this information to the media. I think it's always important for our customers to also know why the price increased and when it's happening, and keeping them informed, because a lot of the times, you know, we get a, well, the city gets a lot of backlash, of course, because no one wants to see their rates increase, but just, you know, keeping community members informed, I think that would be so beneficial.
Well, I, you know, I'd probably remind the council, too, about three years ago, we had a 15% increase, and so, you know, we worked really hard at trying to make sure that we mitigated those and didn't have those big spikes, and then followed by no increases, and then another big spike, and so it would be nice to see if we can keep the increases, if we have to have increases at a number around three or four, so I think that's something that the community can absorb a little easier than a 15% or 16% increase. Ms. Peterson?
So, adding on to what Maria said, sorry, Counselor, sorry. Taking into account the importance of informing the public, and as you said, it's a very information-dense table, I believe it's important that the community is aware of what alternatives we're seeing, and taking a look like, we chose this over this because here's what the alternative would have looked like, and put it in a very consumer-friendly, you know, teachable format. I think having that available, because, you know, some of us really like spreadsheets, they're fun, but not everybody wants to sit down and play with the numbers. But I think if we can find a way of spreading the information in a, you know, visually, you know, easily digestible fashion, that can show, okay, we had this choice, we had this choice, and here's what would have happened either way, I think we will have a public that is more understanding about the types of choices that we're making, and the type of creative solutions that were thought of ahead of time, and that these aren't decisions that we make lightly. I mean, we understand that, you know, not everyone gets a cost of living increase, you know, we understand that, you know, rent can go up, up to 9%, 10% a year. I mean, we understand these things. So if we can have that in a format that the public can see, I think that could go towards bettering our message, because people hear things are getting more expensive, the government's doing it again, and it's like, well, but, you know, not so much.
And to the point of educating the customers, I hope, I hope that you've all heard some things over the past couple of years, starting about two years ago, we started putting out a lot of radio advertising in the spring in particular, I think that's a good medium that is good to get out to our customers, but really it's focusing on making sure that our residents are educated on really irrigation strategies for lowering their spring, summer, and fall water consumption, and I think we've seen some good pullback by the customers out there. So we've been doing our best to try and make sure folks are educated on those types of things.
Yeah, I have a son that's new into the residential market, and so he's discovering what it's like to pay water bills and sewer bills, and so he asked me the other day about his water costs and his sewer costs, and I encouraged him to get on the city's website and get on the Eye on Water app, and he can track his water usage, and so he can look at ways that he can conserve, and, you know, he can't take those one-hour showers in his rental now, and, you know, he has to pay the cost of it versus living at Dad's house. And so, you know, there's a great way to track your personal usage and watch that. It's a great app, it helped save us this summer, we had a leak at our house, saved us thousands of gallons of water, and that's a cost. So there are things that you can do personally to help offset some of these increases as well, and whether it's conservation or finding leaks or that sort of stuff, and the city's here to help with that, so I think that is probably gonna be part of our message, I would assume, that we're gonna send out, too.
Any other comments? Yes?
I do like the idea of averaging it over the three years. At this time, I don't know that I like a 3.75% increase, it's coming right on the heels of a 15% increase recently in the past. It's asking our consumers to pay a lot, and quite frankly, income's not going up that quickly at all, so we're taking a bigger dip out of people's budgets than probably what a lot of people can afford by increasing it like this. I don't know if we can spread it out over a longer period of time, I mean, we do have the opportunity to kind of, as a council, adjust this increase and take a look at it and give further guidance to them as to how we want to go. 3.75%, that's a big jump, I mean, I understand it's not as big as the inflation index we're tied to, but we don't have to stay tied to that index either, and we can adjust the range where we want it to go, what we think is better for our consumers overall.
All right, any other comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. All right, so in front of you this evening, you have a motion, I would take a motion to either accept the fiscal year 2022, no, that's not it, motion to adopt Resolution 2205 and lay upon the record, or amendment, if there's some sort of amendment. Anybody wanna make a motion? Is that a, yes, Mr. Owen?
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Dron, seconded by Counselor Harden, I believe, to approve Resolution 2205. Any public comment? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-2, Counselor Spicer Coon and Counselor Davis in opposition. All right, we're gonna move on to fiscal year 2022, second quarter investment report. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll ask Mr. Kay to give us the details.
Welcome, Mr. Kay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I need that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I wished I had better news for you the second quarter after the first quarter, but Omicron and COVID is still impacting our investments. Surprisingly, the financial portion of our portfolio has not changed, there have been no calls, there have been no maturities, but you can see, they've returned a net of about just a little over 2%, and that number was 3.3% last quarter. That's the effect of COVID and Omicron in the markets for the last three months. Nothing can be done, we're not losing money, but we're not getting the earning capacity that we had in prior quarters. When we look at the energy portion of the portfolio, this is the one where we had the make-whole call I talked about in the first quarter, where they called their bond because they wanted to get rid of the high rate, and we were paid the value of that bond to maturity. And when we had to reinvest it, we came up with a rate of basically blended 3.04%, and that's pretty good, that's not bad. And then our consumer discretionary in Apple and Walmart stock, we actually added $100,000 to our Apple position, and it's allowed us to maintain a fairly good rate of return on what I consider to be the corporate energy and discretionary and staples market. Then we get to that portion of the portfolio that I consider to be our most liquid, which is treasuries and agencies. This is where we took the biggest hit, because you can see our average return through the first quarter on a simple interest basis is only 13 basis points, and that big maturity we had in November of $1 million in a TVA bullet cost us dearly, that was a 1-plus percent instrument, and now we reinvested the $1,075,000 of two maturities in November in this market for the liquidity purposes, and that's dropped our return markedly. It was not where it needs to be, in my view, but 0.13% is better than nothing, but just barely. And we look down at our bonds on the municipals, they're very, doing very well, I'm glad we have them in the portfolio, you can see that their return is 3.63%, and these are, these are really good investments, but they are not quite as liquid as would be the agencies and treasuries. So overall, our total invested portfolio is valued right now at just short of $5.26 million, overall, about a 2.2% return. We have money in LGIP, not counting our ARPA money of $1,003, and, I'm sorry, $1,009 and some change, but LGIP is paying 45 basis points, not very good considering past history, but the best they can do. So right now, all of our funds that we have invested, including the ARPA funds in LGIP, is $10.5 million. Our weighted average maturity jumped up above our target because of that $1 million maturity. We've gone out a little farther on the curve for some of our investments, so that's gonna happen, that will come back in, within the policy of two and a half years in the fourth quarter of the calendar year, and our first quarter of fiscal '23. And our callables have gone up a little bit, not a whole lot, but we target 75% of the portfolio, no more than 75% be callable. I did want to give you a view of the historical pattern in LGIP as far as where we were in December, when I first got here. You'll notice in December of 2018, we were at 2.7, I'm sorry, 2017, we were at 2.75. We are now at 0.45, and that's a drop of just over 600% in earnings in the LGIP. That's just the nature of the cyclical nature of investments and what's going on in the economy and the impact of COVID and the pandemic. The market does not react well to unknowns. If they knew we were gonna be done with COVID in 12 months, the market would reflect that, but there is a big unknown, and the market does not like that ambiguity. With that, I'll be glad to stand for any questions.
Mr. Kay, I heard a comment today, treasury bills or treasury bonds were like
Mr. Kay, I heard a comment today, treasury bills or treasury bonds were like at a high, like 1.81 or something like that percent.
They're they're coming up because there is the economic improvement in jobs. There's a lot of weight attached to that news. I'm waiting to see how that's going to play out through this quarter.
So the LGIP is is pretty much a checking account, right? We can access it whenever we want and let money in and out.
Yes.
Is there another marketplace that we could put it in that's as liquid?
LGIP, we put most of our money there because I can get it within 24 hours at no loss. I can get to virtually all of this portfolio, but I can't do it without a loss on the value of the investment.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I'm always curious. This money doesn't count towards our reserve funds, does it?
No, this does not include any reserve funds, and that's one thing I probably should mention as a result of our last discussion on the minimum reserve policy. I'm going to be visiting with our accounting firm, Barnett &amp; Morrow, to talk about what recommendations they might make on a minimum reserve policy for the general fund, because we do have a significant amount of dollars in our reserve account, oh eight, for all of the things that we're doing that will be expended or have been set aside for something that if we had an emergency, we could tap into that. But we do not have that reflected in the current policy. But I'll be looking at that and maybe coming back to the council sometime in the future, the next couple of months.
So if we could get these counted in our reserve fund, that would open up additional funds, though, that we could spend in our budget?
Well, let me say this. The reserve fund, there's money here in the pool that's invested that represents those funds. It's the general fund balance that we're concerned with, a minimum reserve, that we do not count our reserve funds in that calculation. So this cash is what we have. The general fund is a small portion of that $10 million. So we're investing the cash we have, but when we do the minimum reserve policy determination, we can only deal with general fund dollars. It does not include anything outside the general fund, and that's where the reserve fund could come into play on that. I hope that makes sense.
Any other questions, counselor? Okay. I would take a motion to accept the fiscal year 2022 second quarter investment report as presented. So moved. Moved by Counselor Primmer, seconded by Counselor Spicer Coon to accept the motion. Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Committee reports. Hopefully, you all have seen the updated committee assignments. I moved you guys all around. No, I heard from three of you, so thank you to the three of you that responded. And so there was not a lot of requests for movement, so I kept everybody where they were at. So hopefully, that's okay with everybody. Any updates on committees? Yes? Counselor Dron?
The chaplain are creating a...
I don't know that your microphone's working, I'm sorry.
I don't even know, but I have it on.
Okay. Maybe you could borrow Counselor Harden's.
And I can't remember the name of it, so Chief Edmiston, you might help me with this. But the chaplains are creating a a board, and Lilly and I are going to be part of it. Well, I think so. Yes, you accept it. And so is Mr. Cummings, and we have representation from law and fire at this board. And we didn't have all of the all of the members. Thank you. It's called the Eastern Oregon First Responder Chaplain Association Meeting. So they're doing that, they're in the process, thank you, Lilly. They're in the process of creating a 501(c)(3) so that they can be, you know, their own separate group. And we've met for the first time officially this last week, and we were missing a few members, but I'm excited. They're working on bylaws, they're working on coming up with ways, you know, that we can inform the community about what the chaplains do in our community, for our community, and for our departments. So I am looking forward to, you know, serving on on this board and and learning more and hopefully, you know, getting giving you more updates as we get going. And the Hispanic Advisory Committee is meeting next week, so it'll be the first time that we're meeting. December, we didn't have a meeting, I don't recall. So that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. This new committee is not a city-sponsored committee?
It is not.
Okay. EOTech was supposed to have a meeting last Thursday, but it's been it was canceled due to the lack of attendance, I believe.
Right. We had a number of people who were sick and not able to attend.
Rescheduled till the 20th?
Correct.
Okay. So hopefully, we'll be able to have that meeting. Any other committee reports? Okay. Yes, Ms. Brown?
I do have an upcoming meeting with Greater Eastern Oregon Regional Solutions Team from the governor's office. It's it's going to be a pretty informative meeting, and so I do want council's opinion or input on this. This is a regional infrastructure fund that's somewhere in the ballpark of $200 million workforce or $200 million workforce package that could benefit each region in the state. I will try to send as much information as I can, but I would like to see and give council, I guess, information for opinions for the meeting that's upcoming this Friday. So it's it seems like it's the package that's going to be introduced to the legislature. So if there's any any information either council or city staff have that they want to provide, then I can certainly pass along the message and try to advocate for a region the best I can.
That $200 million was the whole state, not just our region?
Yes.
Okay. No idea what our region's supposed to get at this point?
It's going to be a joint session with the Northeast and the Greater Eastern Oregon regions, so I think we're trying to see if there's any anything that can mesh together. So it is for the entire state, but we're going to see what we can vie for that $200 million pie.
Ms. Smith, do you know if this is money outside of the original infrastructure investment funds that are coming through the feds? Is this different money?
It's it's either different, or it's a piece that they're dedicating towards the regional solutions. I'm not sure the source exactly, but...
Okay. Good. So this will be your first meeting? Okay.
Yes, we don't usually meet very often, but this is one of the ones that's coming up.
Awesome. And that's Courtney Crowell's leadership group? Yeah. So, perfect. I'm glad you're serving on that and representing Hermiston in that conversation. See if we can collaborate with the region and find some resources to come back to our area would be nice. I'm going to move on to the mayor's report, since it seems like we're talking outside of the committees besides our other committee comments. But there wasn't any other committee comments, right? Okay. So the only thing I had to comment on was that City Manager Smith and I now are on the executive board of the LOC, and we had our first executive committee meeting. You may have read that in his report on Friday, that we had our first meeting. And so we have a new interim director. She was... I don't know if she's approved? Yeah, she was approved at the last League of Cities Board meeting. Patty Mulvahill, you guys probably remember her. She was general counsel for the league, fairly very highly regarded within the association as well across the state. And I'm sure if you guys have ever had any interactions with her, you'd completely agree that she was the right choice to lead the organization. There will be a recommendation coming to the regular board next week? Tomorrow? Tomorrow's our regular board meeting to take it in front of the board for the next process of the League of Cities Executive Director to find a replacement. The League of Cities is kind of going through a strategic plan, and the thought was we'll work through the strategic plan and figure out what the league's direction will be and what we look like as an organization moving forward before we hire the new executive director. We need to figure out who we want to be before we figure out who the leader of the organization should be. So I think it's a good process that they've set up. Patty has agreed to sit in the interim until that process is done. And, sorry about that. And so she's agreed, and that may be 12 to 15 months potentially before we get done with the strategic plan. So no new executive director until that plan is completed. So we'll see how that goes, and we'll keep you guys in the loop as as it goes along. It's kind of unique. You have two representatives from Hermiston that are sitting on the executive committee at the same time. So you have a lot of influence. If there are comments or things that you think you would like to see in the next executive director, definitely reach out to one of us. And and as we go through the strategic plan, also, please reach out to us and give us your feedback on what you think the league should look like and what it should be doing for its cities. There are a couple representatives that are coming out, candidates for governor, and that are coming out to our region for public information sessions. So if you would like to attend, I would encourage you to go out and listen to them and see what each of them has to offer. We're getting into candidate session right now, so please stay engaged and informed and let them know what your communities need, especially our community, Hermiston. Anything else? Counselor reports? Yes, Counselor Peterson?
So in regards to the League of Cities, the Women's Caucus is growing every day. It's, I guess you could say, it's blooming. We are developing a larger meeting structure, and I highly recommend, you know, we're inviting pretty much, you know, allies, anyone's interested who, you know, we want a really diverse group. So by all means, if you want to know more. And, you know, we did Patty did sit in on our last meeting, and so we got to hear what was going on with that and about, you know, they're going to be looking for the different groups' feedback and that sort of thing. And so it's it's really exciting what's developing. And so, yeah, I would highly recommend that you guys check it out, and I do mean everyone. Come check it out, because it's there's a lot of really dynamic things happening.
Awesome. I know Counselor Brown serves on the People of Color Caucus as well, so we have great representatives at the state level representing your community. There are lots of opportunities to participate in that, and we're into the committee season right now, so if there's interests, I don't think... Have they cut off all the committee appointments?
Yeah, I think the deadline was late last year, this calendar year.
Okay.
But the meetings are kind of starting, right?
Yeah, and regional meetings are coming up as well. You guys should have seen emails that invited you to the Northeast Regions Meeting. Region 11 and 12 are coming up. They're all online, so you can participate that way. Anything else from the council? Yes, Counselor Dron?
I just want to thank the the city employees that were responsible for keeping our streets, you know, drivable. I really appreciate that because, you know, the the snow just kind of came and kept coming. So I appreciate the long hours that they put in. Please thank them on our behalf, because I didn't see, of course, I didn't go to what's happening in Hermiston now, but I didn't see too many negative comments about, you know, the the streets not being clean. So I really appreciate that, because it also has an impact on the students that walk to school as well. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
I'll definitely pass that on.
Yeah, they were out there working hard. Pretty dedicated staff that are out there all hours of the day and night to clean those. And we now have some decent equipment. I see multiple trucks with blades on them. So investing in your community, so that's awesome that we have the ability to clean the streets, and I know that a lot of people have been appreciative of that. So thank you to this hardworking staff. I was just going to make a comment, too, that I thought about being thankful. You know, COVID's tough. It's been really tough on our small businesses, on all of us in general, but our small businesses particularly. I was in two businesses today that really were just, you know, on a thread, just holding it together, trying to keep the doors open. And they were, you know, they're corporate, told them, hey, close down if you don't have enough people, and they were like, no, you know, our businesses, our business members need us. We're going to stay open. And they were making it work. And I would just encourage everybody to do everything they can to help protect themselves and their families from COVID, number one. I got my booster last week. If you haven't had the vaccination, I would encourage you to get the vaccination. If you haven't been boosted, get the booster. But also be sympathetic to our businesses. Try and support them all you can. I would encourage you to to go out there and and show your support for our small businesses, but be patient with them. You know, they're trying to do the best they can. Some of them are barely keeping their heads above water. Not only is there staffing shortages in every industry out there right now, you can't find people to hire, believe me, we are trying ourselves, but then there's people getting sick on top of it. It's really been a stress on our small businesses, and so be patient with them, be sensitive to that, but please give them your support, show them that they matter, show them that you care, because they they really need you now more than ever. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I have just a few items. First, there's been a little bit of publicity about the new law that took effect in January related to electronic access to meetings. I wanted to let the council know, you know, tonight's meeting wasn't compliant because we didn't have a public hearing, but we are also in the process of kind of putting a little bit better system so that we can offer that maybe even on normal items that we aren't necessarily required to by law, but we're working on a few things internally and hope to have that implemented at our next meeting. So I wanted to just give give the council a heads up on that. Also, some of you may have seen that the there was some buildings torn down on 11th Street, and the that's the Affordable Housing Project that was awarded some funds from the state in the last budget. They're breaking ground and moving forward, so we're happy to see that project get going. And then just wanted to, I've I've mentioned it a little bit, but I've been working with one of the government teachers at the high school to implement a youth advisory council. And he had a preliminary meeting with with a group of students this last week and had some good interest, and so we're going to keep moving forward. As we get that going, eventually, we hope to have a youth member of the, not a full member of the council, but someone who would come and give the youth perspective, and they wouldn't be able to vote, but be able to kind of interact with all of you and and offer that perspective. So and as well as we're hoping to, over time, if we can get some interest, to have a member for many of our city committees so that they can participate in those things as well. So we'll be, we're just kind of working through kind of some of the details, and I'm sure we'll have a few hiccups as we get started, but I'm really excited about being able to get some of the high school students a little more engaged in in what we do here at the city. So that's all that I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Exciting. I know a couple of years ago, we tried to put together a youth advisor, and we had a youth advisor. I remember Ms. Purcell, if I remember right, was an advisor when she was in high school. But having a youth advisory group to the council, I think, would be awesome. And that new electronic participation, that was just made permanent, right? That ruling?
Yeah, it was it was adopted into law. There was some there were some temporary interim things that were done during COVID, but the there was a... but the, it was adopted into law.
It's now a requirement of all public agencies?
Correct.
Okay. Well, good thing that we're out in front of it. So we do have a executive session this evening. The City Council of City Hermiston will now meet in executive session in the Conference Center Rotary Room for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to the negotiation of real property transactions. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S 192.6602E, which allows the council to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the council to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are excluded. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed to not report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decisions may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council will return to open session with the audience, which the audience may attend. The executive session will last approximately 10 minutes. We are in recess.